What?
I don't know if it was off.
It's important.
Only all has the high notes.
What?
Good evening.
It pulls off.
Good evening, it's five o'clock. I will call this meeting of the Washington County Board of Supervisors to order. Uh, this meeting was noticed by the clerk's office appropriately.
Good evening.
It pulls off. Good evening, it's five o'clock. By the clerk's office appropriately.
Good evening.
It pulls off. Good evening, it's five o'clock.
That's just looping.
It's an echo. Um, we have several supervisors online, Supervisor Conrad and Supervisor Krieger Gundry. So we will proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the file of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As most of you know, the reason for this meeting is to discuss the strategic priorities for the next two years. So, uh, with that, I'll hand it over to our Executive Josh Schuman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Everybody hear me okay? All right, thank you. All right, so, uh, we have the next round of strategic priorities in front of you. Um, we've had, hopefully everybody's had an opportunity to review, um, not only the priorities as we had laid them out, uh, as part of the process, um, but also the action items, if you will, um, that we've worked on in the last couple of months, um, and put in front of you at the last meeting. Um, I won't go through all of them, um, maybe simply, uh, go to each initiative. Um, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I want to thank each one of my cabinet members, uh, who are with us today. Um, and my Chief of Staff in our office for helping to put this document together, uh, compared to the documents that I had put together years ago as county administrator, uh, this is a much higher quality. So thank you all for your help making that happen. Uh, but I do think it is, uh, it's an excellent synopsis of the work that we did in the freezing cold temperatures in that room a couple of months ago. So several months ago, I guess it was, but, uh, so with, with that, I'm Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to turn it back. And if you would like to go through them one by one, or however you choose, uh, I'll turn, I'll leave that up to you.
Well, let's start with Next Generation Homes Initiative One. Any discussion? Uh, Mr. Executive, what's the number we are at now?
Um, let me look at my folder just a second.
Towards our goal of 1,000. I know the Regal Place will add 48 more.
As of, I've got, uh, the May report in my hands, uh, 210 owner occupied dwelling units where I have had been funded as of May 6th. I think it's the same in June 6th, but that I didn't bring that one with me.
And the Regal Place development will be on top of that?
Uh, it is included in that, that the funding had already been approved, uh, for that Regal Place is 48 out of those 210.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or discussion? Go ahead Supervisor Mary.
Thank you. Uh, Josh, all the reports I keep seeing, I never see anything about Germantown being mentioned. What's the situation there? Have they shut the door on this? Have we not approached them hard enough? I, I've talked to Jan Miller down there, one of the, um, board members, I guess, and Bob Soderberg is a neighbor of mine, and I just, I don't see anything about Germantown. What, what's the story there, please?
Um, we participated with Germantown in helping develop their, uh, they had a housing study that was completed. And basically we haven't heard much else from them since. Um, the last conversation I had with, um, representatives from Germantown was about the, um, current hotly debated, uh, Ti- Ta- uh, Texas Increment Finance District that they have, um, is it Pilgrim and Ma- Maquonron, I believe. Um, they had purchased that and had a proposal for, uh, I think it was 278 apartment units or something like that. Um, that of course, uh, Village President Soderberg, uh, ran a campaign that was heavily, uh, involved in that particular project in opposition to that project. Uh, I had talked to him then about maybe this is a good spot for us to contemplate, uh, next generation housing. A lot of the folks who were in opposition to the apartments had talked about a project much more like our project in Jackson being acceptable. And I've essentially heard nothing since then. Um, so I, I think that property that they just purchased, I want to say for $7 million uh, would be an ideal location for next generation housing if they were interested in partnering that. Uh, if the county board was interested in, um, acquiring that property from the village, I think there's any numbers of ways that, ways that we could work together with them. Um, but aside from that one project, I've, it's been crickets from the village of Germantown.
Thank you, sir.
Supervisor Bossard.
So when we got into next generation housing, a big impetus for it was taking this one time COVID money and turning it into recurring revenue rather than just squandering it on stuff, or worse, creating recurring expenses without a recurring revenue. Um, do we have at this point, any idea how much we've added to the county tax levy because of next generation housing?
We do, yes, we, we do have, uh, that number. It's not in our regular report. What I can tell you is, um, the, the total amount of tax revenue generated thus far, um, is $217,000 uh, for, uh, 48 units, um, over 20 years, that will be 4.3 million dollars just for those 48 units. Uh, and that'll be just with the currently funded homes I mentioned, that was 210. So you can essentially take the 4.3 million over the next 20 years and multiply it times just over five. Uh, so we're probably going to be closer to $20 million in tax revenue. Um, we can-
Is that just the county portion or is that total city school board, all of it?
That's total tax revenue generated.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're, we've taken 10 million in one time money and we've already turned that into $20 million over 20 years plus continued after that.
Actually less, yeah, less than that even. Um, so we took, we took the 10 million for all of our, um, housing initiatives. Only seven and a half million was for next generation housing. And out of that seven and a half million as of May 6th, only 4.6 had been allocated. So essentially we've invested 4.6, um, we've already produced what will be a return over 20 years of 4.3. And we know that number will, will quadruple, um, by the time all of these 210.
houses, yeah.
Yes. So, um, so if you look at it through that lens, well, in 20 years, we'll have got our m- money back thus far invested five times over.
Yep, excellent. Thank you.
All, all, all taxing entities, all taxing.
Yeah, yeah, but that's still good. That's growing the community tax base. It's excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I will add also, um, Aaron, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a new development. We just saw something on in Germantown at Lannan Road and County Highway Q. And there's quite a few houses and their owner occupied, but I don't know if they qualify for the price that we were looking for. I know there's some that are smaller, but we'll see what happens. Supervisor Gallitz.
Uh, thank you Chair. So Executive Schuman, you know, we, we, we talk about these homes, which is great, uh, great initiative, just the sheer tax value loan that came in. But the question I have is regarding the, uh, workforce housing and the shortage. So of these 210 some funded homes, do we have an idea of how many of those are owned by individuals that actually have a job by a Washington County based employer? What percentage versus those that are living in Washington County but working outside of Washington County?
We do not, I don't believe we track that data. Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, but we can get that answer for you.
It, it'd be interesting to, to understand that if, you know, part of our objective with this next gen housing is workforce shortages and for Hartford and West Bend and other communities that can attract workers, um, would housing help them attract workers? So if, if we're bringing in new houses online, great, that's to help solve some of the problems, but is it solving all of, all of our, uh, problem statement? And, and that's, that's what I'm just trying to understand. Is it 10% of those 210 homes? Is it 50% that actually have jobs by Washington County based employers? Uh, at least it'd be interest- did, interesting to me to know. I'm not sure about the rest of the supervisors, but if that was part of our, uh, problem statement, it'd be interesting to see if we're actually solving for that.
I can see if we can get that data or not. It's easier with the next, um, with the, uh, Heart and Homestead program, which we'll talk about in a little bit. Uh, because we're, we hold a second mortgage, so we get all of that information. Um, with next generation housing, it's a, it's a little bit more complicated, but we'll, we'll look into it and see if we can track that data down.
Supervisor McCulick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, uh, so Mr. Chairman and, uh, County Executive Schuman, can I ask, with regard to this meeting and the goal of it, we have 16 points on this document and so, you know, we're on point one. So the question I would have is, is there a structure that we can offer perhaps, you know, so, uh, these are, uh, you know, uh, they are 16 distilled topics. That's great. I agree. Staff did a great job. Love that. Would the goal here be, and can we perhaps, um, you know, structure this around maybe coming up with something like a top five and taking a consensus, a bottom five? And to get some senses of what the, if, if, if this is about priorities, then let's prioritize them on the 16. Was that one of the goals?
I would say there's two things that, um, that the cabinet and I need from you. One is, uh, are the action items as we've laid them out reflective of, of our conversations? If the answer to yes, uh, if the answer to that is yes for all of them, no problem. Secondarily, the more specific you can get, if there's a top five, uh, I think that's fabulous. Uh, we did that in the first round of strategic priorities that, uh, I worked off of back in 2013. We have, I don't believe we've done that since, but, uh, I'd be very much in favor if that was something the board wished to do.
Yeah, I'm just saying, cause otherwise this meeting's going to run for five hours as we go through each topic and then, so I think we need to have a, you know what I mean, a, a, a structure to this and a goal, and the goal should be prioritizing these things. Otherwise, I mean, yeah, you can read through these things that, yeah, they all have merit, Josh, right? So they all have, you know, merit. It's, you know, which ones are priorities and which ones are sort of wants? Uh, or it would be nice to, I would put next generation housing, for instance, in my bottom five. And I would put things like EMS management, the lead lateral issue, um, uh, the brownfield development, things like that. I think those are public safety. Those are core responsibilities of government. I would put those at the very top. And then the other things we can, I don't know, you know, they're all in there. We can work on them, but I, I suggest that we just sort of, you know, try to coalesce, um, and whether that's taking a consensus, you know, I mean, maybe, uh, just asking for a show of hands on various topics and see how many are on board, something like that. That's just a thought. So again, just trying to bring this horse around.
Yeah, that's, that, yes, thank you. That's a great thought. Um, my, my suggestion might be, um, I, I leave it to you, Mr. Chairman, but, uh, my suggestion might be let's, let's approve the action items as they are or tweak them if you feel the need. Um, and then, once we have them set, it, in terms of the cabinet, they can get working, the department heads. Um, we could have you rank them this, tonight before you leave, and then we can compile all that and report it back to you. You don't, we don't have to have discussion about it unless you, you choose to, or you could come back next month and say, okay, then these are the top five. Um, we could take some more time to do that, but I think for us to get, the, the reason the cabinet's sitting here, the reason we wanted to have this meeting is, are these action items and are these initiatives what you wanted to see? And, and that's all we need for tonight.
Good for you.
So, uh, excuse me, does that, Jeff? Uh, so it kind of is and it isn't because there are things that, that are on here that they have merit, right? But, you know, really, you know, in light of some issues that may come up act 10, you know, uh, so the overturning of that. You know, there are things I think it should be known, and that's fine if we want to take a month, but there are things that we should definitely, you know, have that are bottom five. Not all of these things have merit, you know, right? We're just at point one and we're on next generation, you know, homes. That's one to me is, you know, very tenuous. So it, it has a lot of merit and I get it and I know the demographic issues, but boy, you know, market conditions and, um, uh, a lot of problems that may be coming down the pipe could turn that over. So, I mean, yeah, they all have merit, but I, I, I really think that there should be, you know, some direction. And if you want to take a month to do that, that's fine. But I mean, uh, if we're just saying, well, these things all have merit, I, you know, yeah, they do. But I mean, I don't know that we had ever meeting with regard to that. I mean, that should have been. Do I make sense for any of this? Just trying to put this, you know, to distill this thing? So that, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I don't want to step on your toes.
Go ahead. Sorry, Jeff, people do it all. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Comments from everyone on these and not many came in. So, um, but this is a good forum to do that too.
Yeah. No, 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 that's great. I'm just saying at the end of it, right, somewhere.
And I agree.
You know, pull it together, prioritize it.
Right.
And, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can you turn on? Oh. Who's next? Gallitz. Supervisor Gallitz.
Thank you. Uh, I guess in response to Supervisor McCulick, uh, yes, I agree, there are 16 items and they're not necessarily ranked unless somehow they were by, uh, initiative numbering, but I don't believe that was the case. But in response to your question, uh, many of these items are already being worked on. And some of them have some, uh, financial implication, funding implications, others they don't. So I, as I perused through these and looked at each of the action items, um, I, I don't have a particular one that I would say, no, strike this. And that's not use, good use of our time or staff time, um, for the desired outcome. So unless we find ourselves, you know, in, in a pinch with time and these need to be prioritized for staff. Uh, so a question to Executive Schuman, you and your, um, department heads, have you prioritized these, uh, when you have time available this year, next year, and so on? So I, I'm assuming that's the case, cause like I said, looking at the actual number of these items already have actions and there's directives that are occurring this year, next year and beyond. So I'm assuming many of this, many of these pieces are ready in the works. So maybe another way to, to put it is, do you need a directive from us today?
Uh, the, the ideal director from you today would be to adopt the, the document for us. And if there's a desire to have, you know, give us the top five, um, I would say everybody does that on their own time and then comes back and, and we accumulate those results. Um, because as you mentioned, they are, all of them are in progress at some step, stage. The action items kind of indicate timelines that, that would dictate that. So I would say if, if everybody's reviewed it and there is, they're fine with the action items, they're fine with the initiatives. We don't need much discussion at all. Um, and the, I, the reason I would suggest leaving it for a month is, I mean, you want to prolong this conversation, let's have debates over who thinks initiative number three is number one versus number six. You'll be, you'll be in here all night. So I think the easiest thing, that's why I was suggesting the easiest thing to do is walk away and everybody submit their top five. Or top, you could do top 10 and we'll be able to distill that down to the top five pretty easily. But for us, again, the simplest thing is if you've all read it and you think action items are great, like, let's just approve it and move on.
Supervisor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, let's not overthink this. This is once again a guidance document, kind of like our planning document, our 2050 plan document, something like that, or our, uh, our land, uh, our footprint here at the county buildings document. Um, so it's not something that we need to overthink too much. Keep in mind, this is an amalgam of everything that we worked on that night over at Lac La Ran. This is a, a grouping of all the tight things that we, we thought were very positive for our community. So I would suggest that again, I find nothing in this document, uh, overly objectionable. But if there is something that you have a severe question on, or you have a real problem with, um, fine, bring it up. Um, but other than that, let's not pick apart everything. Let's not try to categorize everything tonight. This is a guidance document. So let's keep that in, in first and foremost in our thoughts that, don't overthink it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Schwab.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the basis of the comments that we've heard already this evening, I would move that the Washington County Board approve this as a concept document with final approval next week or next month, um, pending any further, um, individual comments on the individual action items.
We have a motion by Supervisor Schwab and a second by Supervisor Bossard. We'll do a voice vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Very good. Um.
Um, I'm opposed.
Supervisor Krieger Gundry is opposed. Duly noted.
Yeah, um, yeah, I think we went a little fast before we, you asked for comment.
Oh, you, would you like to comment?
Uh, yeah, I'm not sure what, uh, Supervisor Schwab meant by let's approve it tonight and come back in a month. And then maybe prioritize or add suggestions. So, you know, to approve something tonight, and I know we already took a vote. I'm not sure exactly where that stands. We'll have to ask, uh, our attorney. But I'm not understanding what the vote was.
Um, it's probably not going to be verbatim, but basically it was that the Washington County Board approved this as a concept document, right? Um, so we're basically in agreement with comp, with the com, with the concepts contained therein, with the action items contained therein. But to come back next month with any particular discussion items that there may be that need further consideration. Because I believe the chair is right. Um, the legislative assistant did send it out with requests for comments, but as, uh, very few were, were garnered, perhaps it does need a little bit more priority and, and I must confess, I didn't offer any comments as well. Because I was expecting there would be some opportunity for that this evening.
If, if I could speak, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
The only problem I have with it is we're saying we're voting yes to a concept, uh, without any specifics. Um, we don't have a resolution before us again. Um, I don't like to vote on something that I don't have a resolution where I don't know exactly what I'm voting for. Um, and that, that would be my objection.
Thank you.
I don't understand a concept vote.
Well, as I believe Supervisor Kelly said, this is a rough framework. Anything in here that requires spending money is going to come back to us. Correct? So I would say we go on our way now and prioritize these things. I mean, I can scan through it and there's about five or six things that I put at the top of the list and there's a few that would be less important. So if we can all agree to do that before next month and pass it on to Kayla.
If it'll help, Mr. Chairman, we could, we could create a document to rank. Every county supervisor could rank the initiatives from one to six, I think there's 16. Um, and then we could consolidate that and that will put a point on the, the recommendation that was made earlier. It'll be pretty easy to come up with the top five or top 10 at that point.
Bernie has a comment, so I'm gonna let him say his piece.
Yeah, I'm just, uh, concerned about the idea of supervisors, um, essentially putting their top five, uh, and then submitting that to Kayla uh, or to the chair as if that's some kind of vote, and then those things become the top five priorities. I believe you have a meetings violation potentially there if you're not careful. My recommendation would be quite frankly, not to do that, um, and to come back for discussion and air those things in public and debate and discuss so the public can, uh, hear that, see that and, and, um, and you can then at that point in time, set what those priorities are. Uh, just a cautionary, uh, point of view, but I, I'd be very concerned and we're under the spotlight a lot right now. I can tell you that from all the open records requests we're getting and all of the, the scrutiny we're under, not just us, even around the state. There's some organizations out there right now being very, um, very skeptical about what government is doing and I, I, so I, my, that's my recommendation, if I may make that to you tonight.
Supervisor Trottner.
And I'm just wondering if, um, if it has been approved that this would be go forward as a concept, um, would, can we, would they be renumbered? Like once we, because right now the way it stands, it looks like initiative one would be everybody's top priority. And I don't think that would be the case. Um.
I believe they're grouped in the order of the pillars of our goals. So it, it's not priorities that way. The numbers don't really mean anything.
So I think in the final one that, that the public sees would, I mean, I mean, the public can see this too, but that we all see just to keep priorities, I mean, if there are top priorities, I think it might be eas- more easily understood if the top ones are listed first.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Krebs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, let the record show, I never voice voted, so, cause I was waiting for discussion after the motion.
Okay.
That we never had. So I don't know if it's appropriate to ask my questions post vote or not.
Can you turn yourself on?
Right now there was a, a vote to approve the, the plan as a concept. I'm out of the meeting, it's not been adjourned. This was the only agenda item. I, I think you're fine from a parliamentary point of view to, to discuss what it is that you passed this evening because there could be a motion at some point conceivably to reconsider that vote. So, um, I have, I as a parliamentarian have no issue with discussion continuing.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have a question about initiative number six, the future of UWM, Washington County Campus. And how the action item is worded? I'm trying to figure out if the choice, if, if the, uh, task force has already recommended that social capital, a social capital product, concept is the direction and that we're endorsing it, how it's worded like that? Or are we still? Or are we still, the the very last part of the sentence then does allude to the re- uh possible redevelopment plan for the property, so I'm not sure what we're really supposed to be doing with this action item. Are we? If the that task force hasn't made a recommendation yet or, I don't know, I'm confused by that statement.
Mr. Executive.
Yeah, the the end of the statement, um I think is the you're you're on the right track. If there's both options are on the table, this the task force has not completed anything. They're still in pro- in progress. And it could be to execute the social capital plan and it could be to redevelop, which basically just means tear down the building, but um both are still options.
Do we have any type of a timeline of when we expect the task force to ma- make recommendation by? And if so, could we uh put that into this action item when it's expected? Because other action items do have kind of future target dates of when when uh this board would have future action on items.
Yes, we can add that. I would anticipate that that task force will be done no later than September of this year, and then recommendations would would flow through the normal decision making process.
Okay.
Completed by the end of the year. Yep, we could put those in there.
Um the other question I have, and I'm not finding where I found it, oh, um towards the end, it's initiative fifteen and it's the county campus redevelopment and master plan action items. Talks about, obviously, we that we're trying to figure out what to do with our county campus here and stuff. But a different initiative, and I'm searching for it, talked about redevelopment of some of the county campus on the south side of thirty three. Um and I'm trying to find where that is, but I'm trying to figure out if there was overlap on those initiatives or not. Or if they were kind of alluding swords towards some of the same items.
There is definitely overlap um on those two initiatives, um and it really revolves around the um future of the public agency center. Um so the master planning group definitely will have an impact on the the task force and task force will definitely have an impact on the planning group. I'm not sure exactly um what language we could change, but suffice it to say, they are completely connected to each other.
Okay, and if they should be combined or not type of initiatives, so, thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, Supervisor Conrad.
Go ahead, Supervisor Conrad.
Uh thank you, Chair. Yes, I also, I have some concerns. I was, yeah, trying to figure out too how we are going to discuss all this in in an hour. But with this um document, some of the the action items, it's like there's a assumptions that we've um e- essentially determined or appears like we've voted and approved um within these action items, you know, like such as the fire in EMS one with the plan to recommend permanent funding for twenty twenty seven and beyond. I mean, we, you know, we haven't voted on that or had a really full discussion on that, those um that is all still in the works. Um and two, back to Supervisor Galletts' point, also our whys behind like initiative one and three was to provide housing to build our workforce within Washington County. And, you know, we sh- that should be included somehow within those initiatives. Um and I do have concerns too. It seems like there's some assumptions on what to do with the UW campus. Um, you know, within the action items, it's, you know, these are things that are not finalized or voted on yet. So just want to share some of my concerns. I was um hoping we'd figure out how to discuss the tonight or in a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Well, there being no further discussion, that that is the end of our agenda for this evening. Um I should say our next meeting date of the board is in about a half hour, so but after that, it'll be June eleventh, so this meeting's adjourned.